So we are going to go ahead and get started. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I would like to welcome you all to this very important meeting today, Tuesday, June 5th, 2021. Actually glad 2020 is gone. Being held in the Microsoft Teams platform via video conference. Please note that this meeting will be recorded and feature public comments. Commissioners are asked to mute their microphones when they're not speaking and to verbally identify yourself prior to making any comments. Madam Secretary.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, this is Regina O. Jackson, Planning and Zoning Coordinator. I will now confirm that all members of the Planning Commission are present and can hear me by calling the roll. Commissioner Williams?
Here.
Commissioner Youngblood?
Here.
Commissioner Thaxton? She is on. Commissioner G?
I'm here.
Commissioner Coleman? Commissioner Page?
Here.
Six members of the Planning Commission are present. This public meeting of Planning Commission is being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Northram's March to 12, 2020 executive order. Due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth, given the outbreak of COVID-19, a quorum of the commission is not physically present in the meeting location, but members have joined remotely. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order, which you can find posted on the city's planning department webpage with agenda materials for this meeting, allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will be recorded and feature public comment. Even if members of the public do not provide comment, participants are advised that people may be listening who do not provide comment and those persons are not required to identify themselves. For this meeting, Planning Commission is convening by video conference via Microsoft Teams app as posted on the city's website, identifying how the public may join.
Commissioners, before you are the minutes of the December 1st, 2020 public hearing, do any commissioners have any corrections or changes to the minutes? If so, please state your name before stating the changes. If there aren't any changes, we are in need of a motion to approve the minutes. Commissioners are asked to mute your microphone when speaking and to verbally identify yourselves prior to speaking. Commissioners, before making any motion, please identify yourself.
Mr. Chairman, this is Commissioner Page. I make a motion that we accept the minutes of the previous meeting.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
This is Commissioner G. A second.
Madam Secretary, we have a motion and a second.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have a motion at a second to approve the minutes from the December 1st, 2020 public hearing. Commissioners, as I call your name, please reply with a verbal response. Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Youngblood?
Yes.
Commissioner Thaxton?
Yes.
Commissioner G?
Yes.
Commissioner Coleman? Commissioner Page?
Yes.
The minutes are approved by vote of six to zero. Future announcements of future meetings and conferences. Please note that our next scheduled public hearing is Tuesday, February 2nd, 2021 at 1:30 PM. The public hearing will be held in Microsoft Teams platform via video conference. Items reviewed today will be presented to City Council for action at their February 9th, 2021 or February 23rd, 2021 virtual meeting or as otherwise noted. We also ask that you mute your microphones when you're not speaking and to verbally identify yourself prior to making comments. Our first public hearing item, Z-20-09 Craddock. Jeffrey M. Harper of City of Portsmouth Engineering Department is requesting to rezone approximately 1.16 acres at 4117 George Washington Highway from Historic Residential HR to Historic Limited Business HLB in order to construct a new 16,600-square-foot fire station. The featured land use map of the Build One Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan designates this property for the preservation of open space. The property is owned by the City of Portsmouth and is further described as Tax Map 410, Parcel 115. The staff coordinator is Julie Chop. Will you please come forward and present your application at this time?
Julie, you appear to be unmuted, but we can't hear it if you're talking.
Okay, sorry. I was having some technical difficulty. Okay, good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Planning Commissioners. This is Julie Chop, Senior Planner with the City of Portsmouth. The rezoning application before you today is a request to rezone the approximately 1.16-acre parcel at 4117 George Washington Highway from Historic Residential to Historic Limited Business for the site of the new Craddock Fire Station in the HR zoning sub-district. Rezoning the property to the HLB zoning sub-district will allow the fire station use by right. The city commissioned a fire station location study to examine the location, physical conditions, and operational challenges of the eight existing fire and rescue stations in Portsmouth. Four fire stations, including Craddock #11, Victory Boulevard #10, Hodges Manor #9, and Winchester #7, were recommended for replacement due to age, condition of the building, and ability to meet current operational need. Craddock Fire Station #11 was recommended to be replaced first. City Council selected and approved the optimized location at 4117 George Washington Highway, a city-owned property, as the site for the new Craddock Fire Station. The new fire station will replace the current outdated fire station #11 on Afton Square. The new location will aid the fire department in meeting established response time standards and increase the area of coverage for fire and emergency services to the surrounding community. The property currently contains a skate park and playground facility. The property is in the AE flood zone with a base flood elevation of eight feet. The site is located in the Craddock Historic District neighborhood and the design of the proposed fire station received an approved certificate of appropriateness from the Historic Preservation Commission on November 19th, 2020. To the northeast of the site, across Bainbridge Avenue, is a gas station that is zoned general mixed-use. Single-family dwellings zoned UR, urban residential, are located to the north of the property. Single-family residential dwellings zoned historic residential HR surround the property to the east and south. A fast-food restaurant and a vehicle sales facility zoned GMU are located to the northwest of the property across George Washington Highway. The Afton Green subdivision is located to the west of the subject property on the opposite side of George Washington Highway. Afton Green is zoned urban residential master planned overlay conditional. The proposed new 16,600-square-foot one-story fire station will include three to four apparatus space, firefighter support facilities, and living quarters. Construction of the fourth day will be dependent on the project budget. The proposed fire station includes an advanced decontamination space for decontaminating firefighters, their turnout gear, and equipment in order to reduce the risk of cancer. Updated living quarters are also included in the southwest area of the building that are designed to improve the quality of firefighter rest periods. The fire station is projected to be staffed by up to 10 people and the conceptual site plan shows access to the site from Allwind Road and George Washington Highway. A traffic signal is proposed at the fire station driveway to aid units in entering the highway. Twenty-one parking spaces are shown on the conceptual site plan fronting Parkside Place. The top elevation on the slide shows the east facade facing Allwind Road and the elevation on the bottom of the slide shows the north elevation facing Bainbridge Avenue. The top elevation on this slide shows the east elevation, or shows the facade, shows the west facade facing George Washington Highway and the bottom elevation shows the south elevation facing Parkside Place. After careful consideration, City Council previously approved this optimized location for the new Craddock Fire Station #11. The construction of the the construction of the new Craddock Fire Station #11, the construction of the critically needed new fire station and the extensive public investment in the community meets many of the goals and strategies of the Comprehensive Plan that will help promote and protect development and reinvestment in the area. Therefore, staff considers the proposed land use to be consistent with the overall intent and policies of the Comprehensive Plan. Planning staff recommends the approval of the applicant's request to rezone this site from Historic Residential to Historic Limited Business. Staff finds that the proposed zoning classification is compatible with the surrounding area, is compliant with the city's future plans, and will allow an essential new fire station to be developed. This concludes my presentation and I will now stand back for any questions.
Commissioners, I will now call each of your names to see if you have any questions or comments for Ms. Chop. I have none. Commissioner Youngblood?
Thank you, sir. Ms. Chop, about how far is this proposed location from the existing fire station? In terms of the number of blocks?
How far is it from the existing fire station?
That's correct.
Okay, well, the existing fire station is on Afton Square, so I believe it's maybe two blocks?
That's what I was thinking also, so it's really not a large distance between the two. It's just a much better location.
Yeah, I think a lot of what was considered, or some of what was considered was for the replacement fire stations be located on a major arterial road rather than within the neighborhood, so that achieves this goal.
Right, I understand. That's what I was driving at, but it's not like Craddock's gonna lose any coverage at all.
Correct.
Thank you.
Commissioner Thaxton?
No, sir. I have no questions.
Commissioner G?
I do have, I do have a couple of questions. Being that this space is designated for open space and I know before I got on this planning commission, I was actually on the Parks and Rec Commission. Has there been any talk or any plans for replacement of the skate park? I mean, this is a great location. I believe it's our only skate park in the city of Portsmouth and tends to get a good amount of use from kids. I've taken my son out there before. Has there been talks about movement of that, of usage of? It looks like we're only using about half of that plot of land. Has there been any talks about that?
Yes, the city does plan on moving and moving the location of the skate park. I don't believe that they have, or that we have decided on a location, but I will let the applicant in, Jeff Harper, in the engineering department speak more on that.
Okay, great. Other than that, I mean, I think it's a perfect location and much needed with the state of our current fire station there.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Coleman? Commissioner Page?
No questions at this time.
Madam Secretary?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ladies and gentlemen, we will now begin the public hearing on item Z-20-09. Citizens will be called upon to provide comments or questions and are asked to verbally identify yourself prior to making comments and to mute your microphone when you're not speaking. Will the applicant for Z-20-09 come forward to provide any additional information or comment? State your name and your address for the record and you will be given up to five minutes to speak.
Yes, my name is Jeffrey Harper. I am with the city's engineering department and I am the city's project manager for this fire station. I am also joined in this meeting.
Hey, Jeff, we lost your audio. Try starting again.
Yes, this is, my name is Jeff Harper. I'm with the City of Portsmouth Engineering Department. I am the city's project manager for this project, taking it through from this phase and design all the way through when the fire department moves in. I am also joined in this meeting by members of our design team led by the project manager from Clark Nexon, Brian Wilson. They are also available to answer any questions about the design of the station. I would like to just mention a couple of things. Some influences on the design of the station and how large it appears to be. The number-one cause of line-of-duty deaths for firefighters is cancer, which is, which, from breathing of fumes and particles from actively fighting a fire. And so, one of the main things that we're doing with this station is designing to current standards for decontamination of firefighters when they come back from a call. So that area compared to most of the other stations is much larger. Also, as was mentioned briefly by Julie, another factor for firefighter health is the quality of rest that they get between calls. They can't, they can't control when calls come in, whether it's in the middle of the night or anything else, but we can help to control the quality of rest that they get. So our dormitory area is designed towards giving them a better quality of rest period. And that's all I have to say right now. I'm available to answer any questions.
Commissioners, I will call each of your names to see if you have any additional questions or comments for Mr. Harper. I have none. Commissioner Youngblood?
Thank you, sir. I have none.
Commissioner Thaxton?
I have none.
Commissioner G?
One question I have is aesthetically, will this be designed similar to what is the station? The one that's, the newer one? Can't think of the name of the saving life. Or is there any aesthetics that are gonna, being that this is a historic district, are there any physical aesthetics that are gonna match surroundings?
If I could allow our design team to answer this question?
Yeah, good afternoon. This is Brian Wilson with Clark Nexon, the project manager for the project. I'll turn this over to John Shields. He's our project architect to answer the question on the aesthetics and the neighboring facilities. John?
Yes, this is John Shields with Clark Nexon. I'm senior architect and the design architect for this project. When we designed the station, we tried to take into account the character of the surrounding Craddock neighborhood and the appearance of this building is based in large part on precedents established by other buildings in the neighborhood such as the existing fire station, the apartment building that's located diagonally across the street from the fire station, the appearance of the administration and sleeping area part of the building, which is located on the left of the east elevation. That was inspired in part by a church located in the neighborhood and similarly, some of the design details and the use of materials were selected as a, were selected from other existing buildings in the Craddock neighborhood. So we tried very hard to be conscious of the surroundings when we did this building.
Thank you. Commissioner Coleman?
I have none at this time. Thank you.
Commissioner Page?
In addition to the skate park, there also is a World War II memorial that's there. Is that gonna be disturbed as well?
This is Jeff Harper again, City Engineering Department. I believe that the memorial will be relocated within the site and given a prominent position near the pedestrian entrance to the fire station.
Commissioner Page, has that answered your question? Yes, thank you. Jeff, Madam Secretary?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on item Z-20-09. I have several registered speakers. Our first registered speaker is Bracy Parr. You can come forward and state your name and your address for the record. Please press star six to unmute your microphone and you'll be given up to five minutes to speak.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and Planning Commissioners. Can you all hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you. My name is Bracy Parr. I reside at 11 Afton Parkway and that is on the other side of Parkside Avenue. And not to steal a line from Sarah Palin, but I can see the skate park and the playground from my back porch and I sit there often with my daughters out there playing with her friends. I'm also the president of the Craddock Civic League and I have some remarks on behalf of that body. It is our position in the Craddock community to oppose this rezoning, not on the grounds that a new firehouse is not necessary, but rather on our insistence that this project be paused until we have commitments and a clear timeline from the city on the relocation of both the skate park and the playground equipment within the Craddock community. In addition, the documents submitted for the application conflict on the plans for the park. For instance, specifically in the detailed project narrative, there's one section where it says the existing structures will be demolished, but in a prior section, they speak to relocation. We would like written clarification from the city on what is the plan. We have read the fire study. We understand there's a need for a new configuration of the firehouses in Portsmouth and that public safety is paramount. However, Station 11 was not prioritized as the first station for relocation in the fire study. Stations 10 and 7 were prioritized in all three alternatives offered by the consultant. And in addition, in the Build One study that the city commissioned, this site is recommended to remain as green space. As Commissioner G pointed out, why are we going against recommendations that the city has spent money on to get this third-party expert advice? And lastly, here, just two weeks ago in Portsmouth, a 13-year-old boy and a seven-year-old girl were shot dead. The seven-year-olds and the 13-year-olds who come to the skate park, a lot of them daily, they are not doing the shooting nor are they being shot at. These kids need recreational facilities to keep them out of the streets. We all know crime is more than police officers and the Commonwealth attorney and the sheriff. It starts with poverty. It starts with idle hands and it starts with a lack of opportunities for recreation. As such, the Civic League respectfully asks that the Planning Commission deny the rezoning request this round. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parr. Our next registered speaker is Earl Ferguson. If you would come forward, state your name and your address for the record. Please press star six to unmute your mic and you will be given up to five minutes to speak.
My name is Earl Ferguson. I live at 4 Parkside Place. Can you all hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, I have a few concerns. Currently, there are immense number of accidents at Bainbridge Avenue. This is because of the gas station and the busy street that Bainbridge is. Is how is that gonna be addressed with adding another situation? Looks like the light is gonna be further up on that intersection, so it won't affect that traffic where there's a lot of collisions. Also, I live on Parkside Place and I will be staring at the side of this building every day as well as hearing every siren that comes on when they leave. I mean, it's not much different. I hear them now. But my concern is property values are known to go down when a fire department is located close to a residence. Is the city making any adjustments to the residents that live adjacent to this property? If this is approved, are they making any adjustments to tax assessment values? Because that's the only way we would ever be able to recoup any money in a situation where we would lose value on our property. Also, the green space, I agree with our civic leader in our community that there needs to be a green space for the children. The park, it has its negatives every now and then when children get a little loud, but you know, I live here and I've learned to live with that. It's not an issue for me. I'm happy to have a place. Yes, we need a new fire department because we don't want old ones. But again, I also, now that I know that other sites were asked or like suggested to be replaced first, why would they move to this one in a historic neighborhood where we're held to high standards on our properties? I mean, down to the paint chipping on a post, we have to have painted or we'll get fined. I can't put a driveway in unless I can afford to put in one that looks like it's old. They're gonna be putting start brand-new concrete and pavement across the street from my house, but I would not be allowed to put a new concrete driveway in, which would be $1,000 or more less expensive for me to add. So I'm concerned with several issues that are coming up with this. Are they gonna put any kind of green space to try to deafen or mute the sound that comes off of there as well as stop some of the reflecting lights when they come out with them flashing at all hours of the day? I mean, I have several questions and if anybody can address any of them, I would appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Ferguson. Our next registered speaker is Eunice Dubre. If you would please come forward, state your name and your address for the record. Please press star six to unmute your mic and you will be given up to five minutes to speak.
Can you hear me? I'm trying to get on star six, you said?
We can hear you, Ms. Eunice.
Okay, I'm Eunice Dubre from 6 Parkside Place. I've been here for 33 years. Yes, I understand we may need a new fire station, but to have the fire station placed right here at the park and I believe they're planning on moving the skate park in the back where the old product recreation used to be at. To me, as a homeowner, to have that type of noise, which we have endured some of the noise coming, you know, when they come out on the main highway, but right here in front of my door, I want to find out, have anybody else looked into sign, or looked into any other locations before deciding to go with putting the fire station right? the fire station right here in front of the park where we live at? I think this need to be revamped. I think it need to be looked at more. And by this being a historic site, now y'all want to make it a business site. To me, I don't think that's fair. I just wants to find out what else y'all planning to do concerning this matter.
Thank you, Ms. Jubray. Our next speaker is Mr. Mark Yodal Yotrowski. If you would please come forward, press star six to unmute your mic, and you will be given up to five minutes to speak.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, honorable commissioners, and fellow interested parties. I wish to echo the concerns of those citizens who have spoken before me, although I do not live in Craddock. I'm a resident of the Sterling Point neighborhood in Portsmouth. I would not welcome a development of this sort in my neighborhood, especially since it involves changing longstanding pre-existing zoning that would have been in place for many of the people who bought their homes there with the expectation that they would not have a use of this sort cropping up because of the pre-existing zoning and the reaffirmed zoning as we have gone through a succession of comprehensive plans. I believe it's a betrayal of those folks who invested in homes with the understanding that they would be in a stable neighborhood environment. If I lived on Parkside or Allen, I certainly would not want my view changed to that of a fire station. Of course, nobody can oppose building a better fire station, modernizing and making it, putting it in a place where it would serve the community at large. But this is the wrong place. I suspect that the selection criteria involved in this particular site choice had to do with the fact that it was the least cost of acquisition of any of the other sites. I don't think that's the best reasoning. So I want to add one more perspective on this. I was present at the dedication of this park, but prior to that, I attended many Craddock Civic League meetings where the proponents of this park laid out the case, and it was a multi-year effort on the part of the community to get this park built. I do not want to see that hard work bulldozed, jettisoned, and left to find and have the facility left to find a new home that is not as compatible as its current home. So I urge you to oppose this rezoning.
Thank you, Mr. Mark Yodal Yotrowski. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on item Z dash 20 dash 09. If there's someone else on the call who would like to address this application, you may do so at this time. Please press star six to unmute your mic, and you will be given up to five minutes to speak. Appearing to be none. Mr. Chairman, members of the-
I was figuring out my-
Okay, thank you. Please state your name and your address for the record.
My name is David Summers. I live at 5 Irwin Street, Portsmouth, Virginia. It's in the neighborhood of Craddock. I'm the former outgoing Civic League president for Craddock. Are you there?
We can still hear you, Mr. Summers.
Okay, yeah, I wanted to also support Bracy Parr in his remarks. But to give a little background, some of the questions that had come up were other locations identified. I personally met with the former fire chief, and we suggested an alternate property that is on George Washington Highway, straight down where the new development is, but more in the business area. And that site location did not get selected or even made its way through as an alternate or an alternative. I just wanted to inform those who had that question that the Civic League was very active in finding and identifying alternate locations. And we would prefer it be in that business area in the open land. There's a segment or parcel up there. It's been vacant my entire time, since I've owned property in Craddock, basically since 1989, that whoever owns it's been trying to find a purpose for it. So that to us seems to be a better site, and it's on George Washington Highway, which seems to be the interest, and it's not that far. It's not that much of a difference. You're basically on the other side of that new development, and it's on the thoroughfare, which would allow firefighting equipment to get over to, would seem to be an area of interest to trust very quickly. So that was a win-win, although the Civic League's position is, we don't want it relocated. And we ask that a design information be presented to us that would show us what it would look like if you put this design on the current fire station site with a new building, and then create a plan where the fire station itself doesn't get relocated, but you get the improvements that you're looking for. And that request has not been met. The city has not come back and asked any of the designers to show us a rendering of the new facility on its current location. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Summers. Ladies and gentlemen, if there is someone else on the call who would like to address this application, you may do so at this time. Appearing to be none. Mr. Chairman?
Madam Secretary, hold on one sec. I've got a James Jacob who's got his hand raised, but is muted. Mr. Jacobs, did you want to speak?
Yes, I think I figured out. Can you hear me?
All right. Yep. Go ahead and state your name and your address.
Hi. My name is James Jacobs. I reside at 90 Channing Avenue. Between me and the wife, I think we lived here close to 40 years. I just want to echo Bracy's comment. We definitely need to have a plan for wherever it is. It needs to be a complete comprehensive plan, not only to include where the fire station is, but where you plan on doing with whatever equipment might be located on the property. It's been my experience that in the past, some of these minor details just kind of get pushed to the side in result of a major detail. And until you can get the minor ones solved as well, I also would like for you to put us on hold. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jacobs. Is there anyone else on the call who would like to address this application?
I see a Tony Herndon with a hand raise.
Okay.
If you'd like to speak, there you go. Please state your name and your address for the record. You're unmuted, but we, if you're speaking, we do not hear anything. Yep, I saw you unmuted and muted again. I mean, you muted and unmuted, but we still cannot hear you if you're speaking. I guess we can't get it figured out, so we'll have to move on.
Okay. Is there anyone else on the call who would like to address this application at this time? Appearing to be none. Mr. Chairman, members of the planning commission, this public hearing is now closed.
Commissioners, is there any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, this is Peter Youngblood. Just a point of information here. My understanding is that after we make our, take our vote, then this item goes to the city council for final disposition. Is that correct?
That is correct. Isn't that correct, Madam Secretary?
That is correct, sir.
Right. I just wanted to make sure that the public knows that that's the next step. Thank you.
And Commissioner Youngblood, you actually stole my point as well. I was about to make that same point. As we sit here to talk about if this is proper land use, and according to our codes, is a little bit different than if this is the best land use. So I think that's a key thing. And one of the points that wasn't made in this presentation, that question, is will this new fire station affect the actual district for what that station will cover? I was looking at the fire department's site, and Station 11, majority of what it covers residentially is the Craddock neighborhood. So where my thoughts were, my questions were coming, is where the station currently is, the people who still live in the front, near George Washington, will deal with a lot of that noise anyway, because it just has to travel that entire way down Afton. What this does, moving it to George Washington Highway, eliminates some of the people closer to the station now, and at the opposite end of Craddock, that won't hear as much noise. I mean, it's not beneficial for those near the, near where the new station would be, but at least it does benefit a little bit those on the other extreme of it. But my question still would stand for the city council meeting or for the fire department, if this new station will affect what the coverage zone is of Station 11.
Thank you, Commissioner G. Commissioners, any additional questions or comments? If there are none, the chair's in need of a motion for Z dash 20 dash 09.
This is Peter Youngblood. I make a motion that we approve Z dash 20 dash 09 as presented.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
This is Commissioner G. I will second the motion.
Madam Secretary, we have a motion and a second.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have a motion and a second to approve Z dash 20 dash 09. Commissioners, as I call your name, please reply with a verbal response. Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Youngblood?
Yes.
Commissioner G?
Yes.
Commissioner Thaxton?
Yes.
Commissioner Coleman?
Yes.
Commissioner Page?
Yes.
This item is approved by a vote of 6 to 0. Our next item is CBE dash 20 dash 03, West Park View. Rodney Flores of Pinnacle Group Engineering, Inc., on behalf of Gary Backus, requests a Chesapeake Bay exception for a single-family home in the resource protection areas seaward 50-foot buffer at 1 Peninsula Avenue. The Build 1 Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan recommends high-density, single-family residential development for the property. The property is zoned herbal residential UR and is further described as Tax Map 54, Parcel 15. The staff coordinator is Stacy Porter. Will you please come forward and present your application at this time?
Yes. Good afternoon. This is Stacy Porter, Senior Planner with the Planning Department. And I want to thank Julie for helping me with my slides. Thank you, Julie. I provide an overview of the applicant's request, and I hope that you receive the applicant's exhibits in an email that was this morning, and the applicant will review those exhibits during the public hearing process. Aside from its location in the Chesapeake Bay Resource Protection Area, the property is located in the urban residential UR zoning district and in the flood zone AE. The rear of the property faces Scotts Creek, a tributary of the Elizabeth River. As you can see from the photo on the right of the slide, the property contains a one-story, single-family home that is 1,300 square feet in size. The home was built in 1925, and the property was planted well before the inception date of the Chesapeake Bay ordinance. There is a detached, one-story frame garage on the property as well. I'll now provide an overview of the surrounding area. Next slide. To the north is Scotts Creek. To the immediate east is Baked Land and also a single-family home. To the west, the parcel immediately abuts the Peninsula Avenue right of way, and across the street is a single-family home. Next slide. To the south are additional single-family homes. All surrounding properties are zoned urban residential UR. Next slide. This exhibit provides the layout comparison for the current home and the proposed home that was provided by the applicant. The outline in green shows that approximately 70% of the existing home is located within the seaward 50-foot buffer and is located approximately four feet from the riprap revetment along the shoreline of the property. As a precursor for applying for the Chesapeake Bay exception today, the applicant applied to the border zoning appeals to reduce the building setbacks for the proposed home. The board approved the following. One, a reduction of the left or the west side setback from seven feet to zero feet, where the property line abuts the dead end right of way of Peninsula Avenue. Two, a reduction of the right or the east side setback from seven feet to four feet two inches. And three, a reduction in the rear yard setback from 25 feet to 10 feet. The proposed home, which is outlined in purple, will be located approximately 20-plus feet from the shoreline riprap revetment, and approximately 50% of the home would encroach into the seaward 50-foot resource protection area buffer, which includes an overhanging second-story deck. The new home would encroach approximately 500 square feet less within the seaward buffer than the existing home. Next slide. This is the site plan for the proposed home. The proposal provides a home with building setbacks approved by the border zoning appeals. The applicant proposes to construct a three-story, single-family home with main living area- with main living areas accommodated on the second and third floors. The portion of the home requiring a Chesapeake Bay exception I have outlined in yellow. The site would be accessed from Bradford Terrace onto a proposed permeable paver two-car driveway. In order to comply with the stormwater management requirements of the Chesapeake Bay ordinance, the applicant will provide a Level 1 microbioretention basin as a best management practice. The BNP will be located seaward of the proposed home contiguous to the shoreline riprap revetment. The urban residential UR Development District allows for up to 55% lot coverage. The proposed home development is at 52% lot coverage. Next slide. In these next couple of slides, I'm going to give an overview of the floor plans that were presented by the applicant. It may be a little easier just to look into your staff report. I'll now provide an overview of the ground or the first level of the structure. The applicant was required to comply with the floodplain ordinance as the property is located in the flood zone AE. Therefore, the ground level was not used for a living space. The first level includes a two-car garage, a front entryway leading to a foyer, a west-side entryway located in the Peninsula Avenue right-of-way, an east-side entryway, an elevator shaft, and uncovered, and an uncovered, unimproved grass recreation area. The applicant expressed that the recreation area would eventually be fenced and or covered with paver materials in the future. The living area on the ground floor of the home is 339 square feet. Next slide. On the second level, which is elevated approximately 10 feet from the ground floor, the development will accommodate a master bedroom suite, office, second bathroom, elevator shaft, butler's pantry, kitchen, dining area, and overhanging second-story deck. The second level encompasses approximately 1,890 square feet of living area. On the third level, the development will accommodate a second master bedroom suite, an additional bedroom, third-level deck, and the elevator shaft. The home's third level encompasses approximately 1,497 square feet of living area. In total, the home would provide 3,726 square feet of living area. Next slide. This slide, as well as the next, provides the cemented elevations for the home. This is the front elevation, which shows three ground-floor entryways along with the two-car garage on the first level. Next slide. This is the rear elevation of the home. The height of the home will be 33 feet and 6.5 inches. The maximum height allowed in the urban residential UR zoning district is 36 feet. The applicant depicts a doorway on the rear of the home. The door's location will be determined during the final home design. Next slide. I'll now provide the staff recommendation. Exception requests must meet all five of the criteria listed in Portsmouth City Code Section 9.1-12C. Staff finds that the proposal fails to meet two of these. Criterion 3, the request should be the minimum necessary to afford relief. And Criterion 4, the request should meet the purpose and intent of the ordinance. Staff finds that the development does not meet the aforementioned criteria for the following reasons. One, the development provides 52% lot coverage, nearly the maximum 55% lot coverage allowed for the urban residential UR zoning district. The ordinance encourages minimized lot development in the Resource Protection Area. Two, the proposed home is sized to provide a 20-plus-foot-wide seaward buffer when the ordinance strongly encourages the preservation of the 50-foot-wide seaward buffer with minimal encroachments. The Resource Protection Area buffer serves the purpose of flood and erosion control and should be preserved to the greatest extent practicable. The property's location in the flood zone AE further provides strong support for minimizing seaward buffer encroachments. And three, the development provides three ground-floor entryways, one of which requires issuance of a right-of-way encroachment permit from the Department of Engineering. Three entryways does not demonstrate minimized development within the Resource Protection Area. Staff recommends the denial of the applicant's request. Should Planning Commission choose to approve the proposal, staff has provided a list of conditions for the commission's consideration, which includes requiring the applicant to amend their plan to include any proposed land disturbance for the outdoor recreation area and to reassess the use of the permeable pavers for the driveway. The water quality impact assessment should be amended to correspond with these updates. And this concludes the presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Commissioners, I will call each of your names to see if you have any questions or comments for Mrs. Porter, or Ms. Porter. I have none. Commissioner Youngblood?
Thank you. Peter Youngblood. Ms. Porter, was there any discussion with the applicant about moving the footprint further away from the, from the seawall? In other words, bringing it up closer to that 10-foot alley?
Well, what, this is something I wanted to bring up to, just bear in mind, they had to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals first. And so they went to the Board of the Zoning Appeals with a set footprint already. And so once they got their approval from the Board of Zoning Appeals, basically, they took that same plan and brought it to us, and really, they did not have any plans to do any amendments at our stage, our second stage of the process. The no, they didn't. To answer a question, no, no, they did not.
Okay. I appreciate the fact that, that the existing, or the proposed building will be a good bit further away from the seawall than the existing one, but it still looks like they are, they could pull that whole thing further away from, from the water and, and encroach much, much less within that 50-foot seaward buffer. Thank you.
Sure.
Commissioner G?
You skipped me. Threw me off. So one question I have, does the Board of Zoning Appeals have any say with regards to the seawall and to recommending those changes? Or would that, would that first time, would that be recommended when it gets to planning?
Well, they're, they're not going to be concerned about the Resource Protection Area. No, that would be solely for the Planning Commission to be concerned with. But really, the first step of going to the Board of Zoning Appeals is to try to have the home moved further out of the Resource Protection Area by amending setbacks. And so that was why they went to the Board of Zoning Appeals first. But really, it's going to be for you all to decide whether or not they need to encroach or how much they need to encroach into the Resource Protection Area.
Okay. I have no additional questions. Thank you.
Commissioners, Thaxton?
No questions.
Commissioner Coleman?
Yes, I have a question, and it might be more suited for the applicant, but would, it shows a driveway. If they moved it up, they would obviously have to go back to the Board of Zoning Appeals, but would it be possible to make that instead of a driveway and then the house to be like covered parking right when you go in to eliminate that 18-or-so-foot section of driveway?
And that's a good point, absolutely. And that's something the applicant perhaps could address. That would be just a design review, or design amendment, rather. But yeah, that's a very good point.
Thank you.
Commissioner Page?
No comments, no questions.
Madam Secretary?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ladies and gentlemen, we will now begin the public hearing on item CBE dash 20 dash 03. Citizens will be called upon to provide comments or questions and are asked to verbally identify yourself prior to making comments and to mute your microphone when you are not speaking. Will the applicant for CBE dash 20 dash 03 please come forward to provide any additional information or comments? State your name and your address for the record, and you will be given up to five minutes to speak.
Good afternoon, Chairman Williams, other Planning Commission members. I'm Rodney Flores with Pinnacle Group Engineering. Business address, 445 Battlefield Boulevard in Chesapeake. Can everybody hear me before I go too far?
Yes, we can hear you clearly.
Great, thank you. I'm the agent for Chesapeake Bay exception request for Gary and Janet Backus for their home at One Peninsula Avenue. My client's plan to remove the existing home that was built in 1925, long before Chesapeake Bay Act of 1989, and to replace it with their forever home, a modern home with normal conveniences like central air, safe wiring, and working plumbing. This is something I'd like to stress, that we're requesting an exception to replace an existing outdated home with a home that meets all city requirements. We are not placing a new home on a vacant lot. We feel our proposal is reasonable in every way, and also believe that after we install the BNP's associated with the new home, we'll actually improve water quality to the bay. Currently, the entirety of this lot drains from front to back to Scotts Creek, and there's no water quality treatment of any kind. So the creek gets the full pollution of the building, garage, and any fertilizers, the lawn and such. With our proposed new home, we will install a BNP at the rear of the site to capture all the direct flow to the creek and have proposed pervious pavement for the driveway to capture everything going towards the alley. In this way, 100% of the improvements for the house would flow to a BNP, and stormwater would be cleaned. Another item of note is the current home is a mere four feet from the riprap that protects Scotts Creek. We've moved the proposed home landward as much as practicable, so that we have nearly 20 feet from the same riprap. With respect to getting a front yard variance and moving the home forward, we had to consider the city requirement of providing two parking spaces for the home. As you can see from our site plan that's shown on the screen right now, the proposed home is only 20.4 feet from the alley. A standard parking space is 18 feet deep, and we felt we needed the extra 2.4 feet to allow for today's larger SUVs. Furthermore, having a 10-foot alley in front of our site on-street park is not really reasonable. We minimize our footprint in the seaward RPA through the use of an innovative design whereby actual disturbance on the ground was absolutely minimized. We propose to do this by putting the bulk of our building on the second and third floors on piles, thereby minimizing actual ground disturbance. From a strict, from a, sorry about that, from a strictly common sense standpoint, the only thing that matters when protecting a buffer is the actual disturbance on the ground. You could have a 20-story building, but the ground floor is all that disturbs the earth. As was provided to the city, the existing encroachment in the RPA is 2066 square feet, or over 70% of the existing home in the seaward RPA. Our proposed home has only 200 square feet of actual on-the-ground encroachment in the RPA. And I sent an exhibit earlier this morning. Hopefully, everybody got to see that. We will have an additional 225 square feet of disturbance for the placing of the piles for the home to sit on, for a total of 425 square feet of actual disturbance on the ground in the seaward RPA, which is about five times less than the encroachment today. There was a mention in the staff report about future paving of the underside of the home, and my client has acquiesced not to do that. And we are willing to stipulate that. We'll get to that further in my discussion. There are stipulations that are attached around-
One minute to go, Rodney.
From the staff, thank you. And I would submit that this could be two further stipulations. The homers will not pave the underside, and they will maintain pervious pavement per DEQ guidelines. Understanding everyone doesn't follow rules, these are legal stipulations that the city ensures that properties remain harmonious. There's also mentioned an AE flood zone, and we're moving a lot of improvements out of the AE flood zone, which increases our storage volume in the AE flood zone. We're also keeping the underside of the building open, which further increases our AE flood zone volume in that area. So that actually helps the flood zone in this area. Staff also mentioned that we're maximizing development, not in harmony with the intent of the ordinance. First, first of all, the property is an UR urban residential, which is for urban-city-like development. It carries high impervious areas and building coverages.
Time's up.
All right. Can I just do a quick conclusion? Granted, granting the exception will give us no special privilege. We're trying to put a new, safer, modern home to, in an existing neighborhood. Two, it's not self-created. Lot's been around since 1925. Three, we're offering a reasonably sized house with no pools or accessory structures, just the house. We're going to increase the water quality, so we're in harmony with the act. And five, we're open to any stipulations that the staff would offer in addition to removing the entrance on Peninsula Avenue, maintaining pervious pavers, and not paving the underside of the home, and I'll be available-
I'm sorry, Mr. Flores. Your time is up.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioners, do you have any questions or comments for Mr. Flores? I'll call each of your names. I have none. Commissioner Youngblood?
I have no questions.
Commissioner G?
I have no questions.
Commissioner Thaxton?
I have no questions.
Commissioner Coleman?
I have no questions.
Commissioner Page?
I have no questions.
Madam Secretary?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on item CBE dash 20 dash 03. I do have one registered speaker, Mr. Mark Yudalde Yatrowski. If you would please come forward, state your name and your address. Please press pound star six to unmute your mic, and you will be given up to five minutes to speak.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, honorable commissioners, and fellow interested parties. Mark Yudalde Yatrowski, P.O. Box 50141, Portsmouth, Virginia 23703. In 2014-15, I served on the Flood Plane Management Task Force that was established in the city of Portsmouth, with the purpose of accommodating two new floodplain maps that FEMA had issued. It was in the process of finalizing. And one of the expectations that we were dealing with was that of, at some point in the future, up to 10%, at least 10% of our land area in Portsmouth would be underwater because of sea level rise. This property appears to be one of the ones that will be threatened by that. I could not pull up the elevation on this particular property, but it is in the AE zone, which is not the worst, but it is one of concern. My understanding of AE is that there's a 1% annual chance of flooding on, on a property that is so zoned. I would normally be opposed to encroachment in the 50-foot buffer, but the applicant has done a lot of work to try to reduce the footprint of an existing structure in that buffer. Absent a demolition order, that's going to continue as it was for the indefinite future. I would think there is something to be gained in terms of water quality with what has been proposed, and, and I don't- And, and I don't, you know, I don't say this lightly. I, I think turning this a forever home, uh, I don't know how old or young the applicants are, but in fifty years, uh, that part of Portsmouth could be Atlantis. So I hope that, uh, they live long enough to get, get a good use out of it before the waters are at a level where further use of that sort becomes impossible. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mark Yodalde Yotrowski. Is there anyone else on the call who would like to address this application?
Madam Secretary, I do not see anyone.
Okay, thank you, Meg. Appearing to be none. Mr. Chairman, members of the-
Hold on, Miss, Madam Secretary, I do see, uh, uh, whoa, somebody had their hand raised, and now they're gone.
Okay.
Hello?
Okay, I hear someone.
Hello, yes, sorry for the technical problem. My name is Jim Backus, and, uh, I thank Chairman Williams and the remaining members of the commission and commission for hearing us out today. I, too, am a Portsmouth boy, born and raised. Uh, most of my career, I've had a law office in Portsmouth, uh, at the moment in Suffolk, and I am planning my retirement back to Scotts Creek in Portsmouth and in this very neighborhood. The applicant, uh, Gary and his wife Janice, Gary is my nephew. And while I am a lawyer, this is not a area that I customarily practice in, that is, before the Planning Commission or Board of Zoning Appeals. But I'm here to support their efforts in a situation that I believe is a win-win for all and to the best of our knowledge, not opposed by any member of the community. The, um, exception section of the ordinance, as it states in the, um, the report, is, uh, the intent is to permit, uh, a single-family home on a legal, non-conforming lot. Uh, and what they propose to do drastically improves over the current situation and the typical situations existing in this older neighborhood and similar neighborhoods in Portsmouth and elsewhere developed before. Uh, we were conscious of the, uh, environmental impact. As has been stated, seventy percent of the old home encroaches in the fifty-foot RPA and is only four feet off the riprap. If the proposal is approved, there would be five-hundred-square-foot less encroachment. And instead of four feet from the riprap, it would be over twenty feet off the riprap. Everything that runs off the lot now is untreated. And in addition to these improvements, everything between the house and, um, the creek would be, uh, treated versus untreated. There's been some concern over, uh, minimizing. But if you will look at the, uh, pictures that are shown as exhibits and your knowledge of these older neighborhoods, the homes are large in general. This home is not large in relation to, uh, other homes in, in the community. Also, uh, waterfront is desirable property. And in general, you're going to find, uh, larger homes and, and perhaps nicer homes because of the value of the lot, uh, when you are on waterfront property. Uh, common sense would dictate that if you have a valuable piece of property, you don't put, uh, minimal improvements on it and vice versa. You wouldn't put, uh, maximum improvements in a, in a depressed area just for, uh, common sense investment considerations. The home is described as a three-story, thirty-seven-hundred-square-foot. Uh, I submit, it's a two-story house elevated to address the concerns that are the, uh, backbone of the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Act. The bottom level is nothing but garage, storage, uh, and an entranceway. And I think by statute definition is not considered, uh, living area. So it, it, it may not be, uh, as large a home as what that impression might leave. Another concern that has been discussed in some detail is the, uh, covered area. Uh, and as Mr. Flores pointed out, um, and as is obvious, they had to get elevated in order to, uh, protect their investment and meet, um, code requirements. The effect of that elevation has been to result in less impervious area uh, nearby the water, and that area is, uh, covered by upper levels, uh, of the structure. I, I fail to see the distinction that if it was an open area and it was just, uh, crawl space, it would be a lot of wasted space, but it does not seem-
Time's up, Mr. Backus.
Okay, thank, does not seem it would affect the impervious area or make this any less attractive for approval. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Backus. Is there anyone else on the call who would like to address this application? You may do so at this time.
Uh, yes, I am, my name is Gary Backus, and I am trying to get on. Just want to make sure you can hear me okay.
We can hear you.
Okay, hello, my name is Gary Backus. Uh, I'm a Portsmouth native, born and raised in the Park Manor area. My wife Janet and I started research, searching for a place to build our forever home just under twenty years ago. Some pictures that I'm hoping that you have access to. And do y'all have the aerial pictures that, that we sent in earlier?
Those were provided to the commissioners.
We have those. Okay, great. These pictures were taken in October two thousand one and are a few of nearly a hundred that I took along Portsmouth waterfront. Uh, fourteen years ago, we felt that we had found the right neighborhood and waterfront that several of our friends lived in this neighborhood. Uh, through one of these friends, we found One, One Peninsula Avenue. And then, the then owners, Timothy and Dorothy Wood. Mr. and Mrs. Wood were elderly and in somewhat bad health, but they said we were planning on moving to Suffolk, Virginia. After three years being patient, Mr. Wood said he was ready to sell after finding he had a terminal condition. But he needed me to grant Mrs. Wood a right of survivorship in which I honored. Mrs. Wood survived for another nine months, and I was then able to go into the house for the very first time. That was eleven years ago, and now that our kids are older, our dream to build our forever home is at hand. By working with a professional house planner, we feel that we are creating a home that will continue to improve the neighborhood, as several of our neighbors have done before over the last eleven years. We have also put thought into this home to give it interesting architectural features that fit into the neighborhood. Our original plan did not include a garage or area under the water end of the home. This was created largely due to the requirement that we substantially raised the first living level floor above the current home's existing floor to be at least three feet above the, uh, base flood elevation. This additionally solidified the thoughts that we would install an elevator to be able to continue to enjoy this home into our later years by reducing the need for stair climbing. Another item that was not in our original plan was the rent, entrance on Peninsula Avenue, but was informed by the city that this was a necessity. However, if given the option, we would happily eliminate that entrance. Additionally, by working with Rodney Flores, professional engineer, we continued, continued creating our dream home and strive to create relief as it pertains to the CBPA. We have been able to move our house further from the water first by ten feet, then additionally, another seven feet per the engineer's recommendations. We then eliminated a set of stairs accessing the first-floor living space deck on the water end of the house, all to reduce the impervious area in the seaward fifty as compared with our current house. Next, we added a BNP to filter the water runoff. Uh, and last but not least, at the urging of the staff of the city, we removed the permeable pavers that the house designer had suggested. Uh, the house that we were creating, that we are creating tries in earnest to have all our dreams come to volition while remaining modest in its square footage. We feel its creation is better in all aspects toward the environment when compared to our existing house. It's with great hopefulness that all these factors which improve the neighborhood and the environment will help the Planning Commission feel good about granting us an approval. I truly appreciate and thank you for your time. Be safe, and I hope you have a happy new year.
Thank you, Mr. Backus. If there's someone else on the call who would like to address this application, you may do so at this time.
There does not appear to be anybody else.
Thank you. Appearing to be none, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission, this public hearing is now closed.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Secretary. Commissioners, is there any further discussion?
Uh, yes, uh, this is Peter Youngblood. I have a question for Bob Baldwin. Is he, is he still on the call?
Of course I am.
Okay, uh, Bob, my memory is, is really weak, but as I recall, this is one area that our decision, it's the final one, it does not go to City Council. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, I just wanted to, to make sure that I, I was, uh, thinking about that correctly. Thank you very much, sir.
Commissioners, any other discussion or questions? There being none, the chair's in need of a motion. Now, remember that, uh, Ms. Porter suggested that should be approved, there may be conditions. So consider that when you're making the motion. The chair's in need of a motion.
This is Sherri Thaxton.
We can hear you.
Okay, I have a little difficulty today. I'd like to make a motion to approve with the conditions.
We have a motion to approve with conditions. Is there a second?
Commissioner G, I have a second.
We have a motion and a second with conditions. Madam Secretary?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have a motion and a second to approve with conditions. CBE dash twenty dash zero three. Commissioners, as I call your name, please reply with a verbal response. Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Youngblood?
Yes.
Commissioner G?
Yes.
Commissioner Thaxton?
Yes.
Commissioner Coleman? Commissioner Page?
Yes.
This item is approved by a vote of six to zero with conditions.
Madam Secretary, I believe that concludes our agenda for today. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Commissioners, is there any further discussion of business that we need to discuss today? Let me remind you that your real estate, uh, disclosure statement is due to the City Clerk's Office by the first of February. Mr. Baldwin, any further business?
Um, no, sir, I do not. Thank you.
Hearing none, this meeting is now adjourned. Thank you, Commissioners.